And we're ready.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of Hamilton City Council, June 25th, 2025, Bill after six o'clock here in City Council chambers, 345 High Street in Hamilton. We do have one public hearing this evening regarding the health code and health department and license and program fees. Roll call, please.
Mohler.
Present.
Pullman.
Present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Present.
Nab.
Present.
Lauer.
Present.
Give a quorum.
We're going to start off glorifying a prayer by Councilmember Joel Lauer, filed by the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Lord, we are thankful for the continued growth that you bless our city with. Please bless our first responders who continue to serve our citizens with respect and dignity. Please continue to protect our military personnel who serve our country bravely and bless those gentlemen who went on the mission this past week to serve our country without, without fear. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no doubt, and justice for all.
Okay, before we get started with the meeting, John Barry passed away recently, and I bet you recognize him because he went to a lot of council meetings. He's kind of like the eighth member of council, and he cared a lot about Hamilton, but he, you probably recognize me at most of the concerts and all around town. He cared about Hamilton residents, cared about Hamilton, Hamilton's future, because he always had something to say, positive, but he always had some suggestions. Anybody else want to say anything before a moment of silence? Put on the sounds for John Barry, please. Thank you. Okay, we have no special presentations or proclamations at this time. We go directly to audience of citizens. Individuals which may make comments may make comments during this part of the agenda or reserve the right to comment prior to the being on council floor for a vote. Individuals who wish to speak in audience of citizens are required to sign our public speaking book. Each speaker is allowed up five minutes. We have Robert Miller first. If you'll come to the podium, sir, give us your name and your, how about, how about over here? Might be easier to have your voice projected from over there. Tell us your name and your address.
Robert Miller, 638 640 Hill Avenue.
Great, tell us what's going on.
Okay, I received a letter from Ms. Cindy Hogg for the rates for sewage treatment. The problem is, is I've owned that property for over forty years now. There are no sewers, so I'd like to know when we possibly can get some sewers, because at this point, those, the street, the buildings are, have probably been built in the forties or fifties, I'm going to guess, and at some point they're going to fail and it's going to create a major issue. We have, we have asked numerous times, numerous times of the city to do this, and we get no response, so that's why I'm here.
Well, let's see what we can do. Mr. City Manager, somebody that maybe he could speak to or be connected with?
Yes, sir, I think Ms. Liz Hayden's here this evening, and she'd be happy to speak with you, get some more information from you.
Who is that, please?
Ms. Liz Hayden.
Okay.
She can meet you out in the lobby and we can get some more information from you, have a discussion and follow up with you.
Okay.
Best way to handle it, sir, you get a chance to talk one on one with our city professionals, and that's just the best way to try to address.
Okay, yeah, because, I mean, you know, like I said, we'd like to get something done because at some point or another, it's going to fail and then it's going to create a major problem.
Now, you've got, I think, two city professionals to talk to you about this, and that's the right way to handle it, sir. Trust me, you're going to have an exchange, information, and see what, see what's out there as far as an option goes.
Yeah, and I'd like to compliment Ms. Cindy Hogg, she's been a great help also.
That's three great city professionals that you've dealt with.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, okay, for being here and trying to address this issue. I could use a fly swatter right now.
Just close the book.
No, that'd get a mess. You'll see something happen here in one of these seconds here. Bob Harris, be out in the hallway. Bob Harris.
Good evening.
Good evening. I didn't have my track shoes on. Oh, boy, been a while since I've been in here. Good evening to council and audience of citizens. Boy, it's a hot one. So, today, I want to thank the safety director for taking care of some business in the community and the city manager, and I, I'm always elated when I get hold of some people here at the city and it's an emergency and they step up to the plate. So, I think that the chief, when he was chief of police, he said, well, Bob called, you better answer the phone. But I do have to call sometimes, and I make that happen. But tonight, I want to invite council out to the cleanup, and I got a spot for you. Just let me know if you're going to make it. That's July the 12th. We're starting at eight o'clock in the morning, and we're running to four. So, I'm giving you a good head start, and like for you to come out, be a part of it, and we're going to make it happen.
Is the meeting spot Bailey Square again?
Bailey Square is always the meeting spot, and I have it laid out by quadrants, and we'll, we'll attack that and make it happen.
Right.
So, if anybody's got any questions about that, I'll entertain those.
Any questions at this point in time about the cleanup?
I already have Lauer's position. I, I got a job for him, and hey, he's going, he's going to run that half of the cleanup, and I'm going to run with his shirt on to get him back on council, but he going to have to pay me.
I'm broke.
So, I want to thank you. I'm going to go back out here and take my, my seat, and I just want to let everybody know I appreciate everything that you've done this year and last year and the year before. It's great. We're going up. God bless you and thank you.
Thank you for saying thanks, Bob, okay? All right, that takes care of our audience of citizens. We'll now go to the consent agenda. Act closes matters such as staff reports, caucus reports, meeting minutes, information report for the May 2025, finance report, information report for the May 2025, investment report. Those who go to the committee of the whole, I'll set the motion that the regular meeting be recessed, committee of the whole take place.
Second.
Motion made by councilmember Nab, seconded by vice mayor Pullman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 6:11. Committee of the whole is when we get a chance to listen to our, our city professionals, do presentations, we can ask questions, learn more about some of these items coming up for council consideration. So, just a minute, Mr. City Clerk, you going to lead us in this?
Yes, sir. Our first two presentations will be made by our finance director, Mr. Dave Jones.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. So, this first caucus, caucus item is a request for an extension of a lease, a community first. You probably know the finance department still, or resides over there, and we've been there since the fall of 2022. And right now, we're just looking to keep all options open and market the fourth floor. So, we're asking for a one-year lease extension. The cost of that is $31,702. You can have six-month or twelve, twelve-month renewals, but it would have to be under the same terms and conditions. Right now, I think we're bringing in about $341,000 from the two current tenants we have in this building, so, you know, it'd be a good thing to keep the options open. Guys, have any questions on that one?
Any questions? Thank you, Dave.
You're welcome.
Same side.
All right, so the next one's the 2026 tax budget. I come to you guys every year about this time, and we're required to submit a tax budget to the county auditor, who is the secretary of the county budget commission. Excuse me, the budget commission consists of the county auditor, the county treasurer, and the county prosecutor. And what they do is they take the tax budget and they certify that all the levies and then all the, the inside mileage, which has been a hot topic right now, is correct and allocated properly. And then they also review the estimated sources of, or estimated revenue sources, which is your carryover cash balance from the prior year plus the current estimated resources. Then when you guys appropriate the money in December, that's the expense side of it, and we have to ensure that our appropriations ordinance, you know, is not greater than those estimated certificate of resources. And then we also submit supplemental appropriations to them each year. They're kind of the watchdog of that. That's kind of a checks and balances between your guys' appropriations, our fund balance, and what we project as revenues. There is a public hearing on the tax budget. It'll be at the next council meeting. It is a resolution. The tax budget will be, be available to the public on the 27th Friday of this month. The contact information's up there. We'll have it on the website. You can email me, or you can call 513-785-7170, and we'll have it available to the public. Any questions on that?
Any questions? Thank you for the good presentation, Dave.
You're welcome.
And next, for agenda item number three, we'll have a verbal presentation by our city manager, Mr. Craig Bukite.
Thank you, Daniel. This, this item is a proposed recommendation for ballot language that would amend the current Article 10 of the city charter. This comes from the Charter Review Commission that met earlier this year for several months. They reviewed the entire charter and confined their recommendations to a number of items within Article 10 itself. Those recommendations include just updated language. Currently, the Hamilton City School District School Board appoints one member of the Civil Service Commission. However, the schools no longer use the commission, so in consultation with the school district, they, they were in agreement to, to change that language and allow city council to appoint all three members of the Civil Service Commission. There would also be some updated language that would reflect some different utilizations of the Civil Service Commission. So, if you look at other communities across the county, many, if not all of those, have moved away from civil service. They're using employee, employee review boards and different processes. We came up with what is essentially, I think, a great balance, and that is it maintains the Civil Service Commission. They maintain their independence and autonomy and authority, and we restructure this so that the, the current director, Ms. Jean Pope, would report through the chain of command up through the city manager, like every other director in the city. So, this is a, an effort, a combined effort by Brandon Sarber, who is the director of Personnel and Strategy here, the executive director, as well as Ms. Pope and myself, and it came with our full city administration recommendation, as well as unanimous recommendation from the Charter Review Commission.
Any questions? Thank you. Thank you.
Next up for agenda items four and five will be a presentation by, oh, it can't be right, Daniel Tideman, city clerk. Hello, Mayor, members of council. I've got two items on the agenda that I'll be presenting on tonight. They're both related to liquor permit applications. The first item, number four, is for a liquor permit transfer of a C1 and C2 permit for the proposed quick trip. That's going to be on 1115 High Street. This is going to be a new gas station. The permits are for the purchase, the sale of beer and wine to be consumed off premises, so as you would normally see at your typical gas station. Do we have any questions on this item? No, okay. And then number five is a, also a liquor permit transfer of a C1 and C2 permit at 1255 Central Avenue. This is a, currently a operating drive-through. Once again, beer and wine sales to be consumed off premises. Do we have any questions on this item? Okay, thank you. And lastly, for agenda item number six, will be a presentation by our health director, Ms. Cindy Hogg.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm here tonight to speak to you about the Southwest Ohio Air Quality Agency Agreement. Southwest Ohio Air Quality Agency provides air quality management services to the city of Hamilton. These include permit, permitting air pollution sources, investigating complaints, enforcing air pollution regulations, and operating air quality monitoring networks. This previous agreement was adopted in 1996, and the new agreement will enable us to continue our air pollution control services and allow for updated fees. Have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. I'll set the motion, committee of the whole be closed.
So moved.
Second. Motion by councilmember Fear, second by councilmember Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 6:19. I'll set the motion that the regular meeting be reconvened.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Nab, second by councilmember Vaughn. Roll call vote, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
All right, we now go, I'll set the motion at this time. Vice Mayor Pullman.
Motion now, with the exceptions of the items so noted, council receive the reports of the consent agenda and concur on the recommendations.
Second. Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, second by councilmember Lauer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 6:20. We're going to go into the public hearing, and I'll set the motion, the regular meeting be recessed, and the following public hearing take place.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, second by councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 6:20. Now go into the public hearing, if you read that into the record, please.
A public hearing regarding amending sub-paragraphs A through G, I, and K of Section 1733.01, fees and charges, health code of the codified ordinances of the city of Hamilton, Ohio, relative to license, permit program fees for retail food establishments, food service operations, vending operations, public swimming pools, body art services, and sewage treatment systems, and repealing said existing sub-paragraphs A through G, I, and K thereof.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving our health code amendments relative to license, permit, program fees? Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving our health code relative to license, permit, program fees? Anyone in council wish to be heard or wish to make a motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the public hearing be closed.
Second. Motion by councilmember Vaughn, second by councilmember Nab. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried, public hearing is closed at 6:22. I'll set the motion at the regular meeting be reconvened.
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Pullman, second by councilmember Fear. Roll call vote on that motion to reconvene the regular meeting.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
Okay, we're back into the regular meeting at 6:22. We now go to council actions pertaining to legislative items, and I'll set the motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council was furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second. Motion by councilmember Vaughn, second by councilmember Nab. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, 6:23. We now go into pending legislation. Agenda item number eight, which is second reading of an ordinance involving 2350 Pleasant Avenue, preliminary and final plan development, should be development, second reading of an ordinance.
An ordinance approving 2350 Pleasant Avenue, preliminary and final plan development, plan to allow renovation and occupation of the building as a mixed-use building, 7,000 square feet of commercial space, and 125 apartments. Kenneth Schoen, Bloomfield Schoen and Partners Applicant, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Nab, second by councilmember Vaughn. Any discussion on this one? Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Ryan.
Just want to thank our city staff for working really hard on this. This has been a, a long haul, but this is going to be great for Lindenwald. This is going to be a fresh start for the neighborhood, and I'm looking forward to watching this get redeveloped and really excited for Lindenwald neighborhood. This is, this is going to be great, and a lot of exciting times ahead. We've got a couple more steps we got to get through, but appreciate Lindenwald's patience and belief and trust, so great times are ahead. Thank you.
Anyone else on council? Agree with you, councilmember Ryan, I mean, just the people that we've talked to at Planning Commission, cookouts, everybody's really excited by this. They have to finish connecting the dots, but I'll say when that gets done, it's going to be a great, great project. All right, if nothing else, roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, seven zero.
Now go to agenda item number nine, which is second reading of an ordinance involving memorandum of agreement, IUOE Local 20 Union.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the execution of a memorandum of agreement with International Union of Operating Engineers Local 20, AFL, CIO, IUOE Local 20, to amend Schedule F, the CE's classification and compensation plan, to reassign the pay ranges for the plant utility worker and utility crew, utilities crew leader positions, and to adjust the training stipend, second reading.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
I'll make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, second by councilmember Fear. Any discussion on this ordinance? Okay, hearing none, roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, seven zero.
Go to agenda item number 10, second reading of an ordinance involving a sale development agreement for 216 South Third Street.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a sale and development agreement, property conveyances and related actions related to certain real property located at 216 South Third Street. City of Hamilton seller, ILSO LLC purchaser, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Nab, second by councilmember Ryan. Discussion on this particular ordinance. Roll call vote then.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, seven zero.
Now go to new legislation, agenda item number 11, first reading of an ordinance involving the process for certification of legislation.
An ordinance amending Section 167.08, certification of legislation regarding streets of Chapter 167, public records of the codified ordinances of the city of Hamilton, Ohio, relative to clarifying the process for certification of legislation through the Butler County Recorder's Office.
Thank you. Go to agenda item number 12, first reading of an ordinance involving the public hearing subject of health code, health department license permit fees.
An ordinance amending Section 1733.01, fees and charges of Chapter 1733, fees and charges of the codified ordinances of the city of Hamilton, Ohio, relative to license, permit, program fees for retail food establishments, food service operations, vending operations, public swimming pools, body art services, and sewage treatment systems, first reading.
Agenda item number 13, first reading of an ordinance amending our various traffic schedules of the traffic code.
An ordinance amending various traffic schedules of the traffic code as established in ordinance number OR 5264 in 1951 by establishing restricted parking places and special places for parking for the handicapped and repealing certain other traffic like regulations, first reading.
Go to agenda item number 14, which is a resolution involving a purchase and sale agreement for property located near State Route Bypass 4.
A resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement and related action for certain real property located near State Route Bypass 4, parcel number P 646106000111, City of Hamilton property owner, board of parks commissioners of Metro Parks of Butler County, Ohio purchaser.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, second by councilmember Fear. Any discussion, questions, or comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Audience, City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, just want to acknowledge that we had, I believe it was our fourth barbecuing for a Better Hamilton event on Monday last week down at Benningoff Park. It was great turnout, a lot of folks there to enjoy some, some good food, some great conversations. We were scheduled to have a cookout at Jefferson Park in the Jefferson neighborhood on Wednesday, but a storm came through, and we're in the process of rescheduling that, but we look forward to getting into the Jefferson neighborhood for our cookout sometime in the near future.
Launch the city council, anybody?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Lauer.
We continue to have great attendance down at Bailey Square for Blues on Bailey, another great showing, great time. So, next one is in the third week of July. You guys are more than welcome. Also, on July 20, Saturday, July 26, there'll be a Lee Quarter Scholarship fundraiser. This will be held at Municipal Brew Works. Lee Quarter is an amazing educator. He's been in Butler County for over 30 years. He's done an outstanding job of mentoring teachers as well as helping students move along. Lee owns CW BBQ, and you've probably seen him up at Municipal Brew Works a couple of times. Unfortunately, Lee has been diagnosed with cancer, and his wish is to create a scholarship fund, and this will be a fundraiser for that so that some student from Butler Tech in the culinary arts can continue their culinary arts education and enter into a career. Lee's served our, our county through Butler Tech and Lakota Schools, like I said, for over 30 years, and he means a lot to a lot of people. If you guys could please come and help support this event, I think everybody would be welcome and appreciated. Thank you.
Anyone else? Couple things to mention, Live Force Celebration, Friday, July 4th, parade, fireworks, concert at Riverside Amphitheater, and one of the TV stations we believe in Cincinnati is going to be here all day. They chose Hamilton to cover, and we hope that does follow the They chose Hamilton to cover, and we hope that does follow through because it'll be from coffee in the morning till fireworks at night, and it'd be great if that actually does happen, and they can see how we do July 4th and how we do it right in the city of Hamilton. This could be a record for a regular meeting getting done, and I think John Barry has something to do with that. Now, Mr. City Manager, executive session.
No.
Okay, here, motion.
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Pullman, second by councilmember Fear.
We had to get to record.
Roll call.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
We are adjourned at 6:32, so we've got a record.